Mike Atien, I want to ask him to introduce himself, if you don't mind, Mike.
Well, good evening, everyone, and thank you, Jesus, for the brief introduction. Again, I am excited to be here in the city of Victoria as the new Assistant City Manager. I want to say thank you to Jesus for the appointment and also thank you to the community for welcoming me. I come to you from the city of San Antonio, where I served for almost 10 years as an Assistant Director and a Director of Neighborhood Revitalization, Assistant Director of Neighborhood and Housing Services. So I have extensive experience as well, working on economic development, neighborhood revitalization. So I am deeply looking forward to working with the community, with you council members, to improve quality of life here in the city of Victoria. I'm excited in regards to the future of the city of Victoria. I think the city of Victoria is a city that is on the rise, a city that has limitless potential, and I think I bring these skills that will help improve the quality of life in this community. So again, thank you, and I'm looking forward to working with you and also the staff to really improve the life here in the community. So thank you very much, and let me know if you have any questions.
Thanks, Mike.
Welcome aboard.
No questions tonight, Mike. We'll take the applauses whenever we can get them, right? Second comment, I want to also acknowledge publicly gratitude to Donald Reese. As you, many of you know, he, this is his last council meeting as our Public Works Director. He'll be leaving for a really excellent opportunity as an Assistant City Manager with the city of Brenham. Been with us for 21 years, almost 21 years, and so I think he's definitely worthy of at least a round of applause for his service for our city. Do you want to say anything?
Thank you very much for that. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve the city of Victoria. I've worked with some great people here. You know, one of the wisest that I've worked with is Gilbert because he hired me almost 21 years ago. So, you know, you can either thank him or blame him, whichever one you want to do. But seriously, I've enjoyed every bit of this, and I am looking forward to some other opportunities. But it's been a great adventure working here, and I appreciate it. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Donald.
I'd like to say one thing. Donald, thank you very much. For my first day on council till the last, this recently, he's always treated me with respect. He's always answered my questions. He's always made me feel like I was important, and he's going to be missed. Thank you, Donald, for everything. Appreciate the way you communicated with me and treated me.
I'd like to say ditto.
Yes, I think we have some public recognitions tonight.
Yes, sir. We have one proclamation to read tonight, and this is a proclamation for Gulf Bend Center, which is, as we know, is celebrating their 50th anniversary this week. And this proclamation is signed today by Mayor Raleigh McCoy, and it reads in part, "Whereas Gulf Bend Center of Victoria, Texas is celebrating its 50th anniversary, and it is appropriate at this time to commend Gulf Bend Center on the positive impact it has made by improving the quality of life in our community for individuals and their families by providing excellent and trusted care for wellness. Whereas Gulf Bend Center has been an integral part of this community, providing services for a very special segment of the population, specifically the serious and persistently mentally ill, including persons with schizophrenia, bipolar disorder, and major depression, as well as addressing the needs of persons with intellectual functioning and developmental disabilities. Whereas Gulf Bend Center, through its unique approach to serving children, adolescents, adults, and families, is effectively caring for the mental health and intellectual functioning and developmental disabilities, needs of the individuals in our community. Now, therefore, I, Raleigh McCoy, Mayor of the city of Victoria, Texas, congratulate Gulf Bend Center on its 50th anniversary." And it is signed today by Mayor Raleigh McCoy.
Is there anyone from Gulf Bend here tonight? Oh, there you are, Jeff.
Y'all can slide to the middle if you'd like, if it's a better.
Thomas wants to be the photo.
I want a photo bombing.
Okay, we will now move into citizens communication, or items from council. Is there any items from council tonight?
I have two. A quick question, and, Mr. Reese, we're not letting you off the hook. Could you give an update, or could you tell us the cost of the signs, the ones that we've designed that say "Keep the Change"?
Sure. So the total cost of each one of those signs to have it made and then installed would be $104.35. Today, I delivered a mocked-up, little bit larger version to Mr. Garza so that he could take a look at it and make sure that's kind of what he thought council really wanted. And so it's a little bit bigger than what was presented to council the first time. I think it'll be a little bit more effective, and he's kind of given us the thumbs up to go ahead and move forward with that. So I will speak with the Traffic Control Division first thing tomorrow, and they'll start making the signs and getting them installed.
Great, thank you very much.
Sure.
And how many signs are we going to be putting up?
Should be six signs to start with. And then, as we see the need for more signs, we'll put more up.
Looking forward to them.
So that would be about $636.
Any other items for council?
Or that. I had a taxes.
And for the future, I'd like to ask if we could have a report on, I know we're going to discuss Boot Fest a little bit tonight, and so I'm just kind of wondering if we don't use the money that we're going to allocate, or that we've allocated to Boot Fest, what other things we might be able to do with it, because I know we're limited to some extent because it's hotel occupancy funds. So I was wondering if we could have a report on some other ideas.
So, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is what you're referring to sort of an educational presentation to council on how we can utilize hotel occupancy tax dollars? I want to make sure I understand the request.
I wasn't necessarily making it that broad, but we do have a couple of new council members that's maybe a good idea.
Just start there? Okay.
Also, I know we're just going to discuss dollars for Boot Fest, but if we're gonna, I would like, we had, it had been brought up about it being a paid-for event.
You mean admission?
Admission, excuse me. But also, I'd like to consider other venues for it. It's been downtown, but is that the right venue?
Sure. If I can make a clarifying statement, if you don't mind. So the recommendation that'll come a little later, this agenda for a budget transfer, is for us to get the ball rolling officially for Boot Fest 2020. We are happy to explore options for Boot Fest 2021. So I just want to clarify that we're recommending that we proceed with Boot Fest 2020 as we all know it to be, and that any conversation about charging an admission, or changing location, or transferring the funds to be utilized for something else is not something that would take effect until the 2021 year.
That would certainly be my expectation.
Okay. But for the benefit of the audience, the public, et cetera, I just wanted to make that clarifying point.
And really, I'm just asking for us to go back and revisit the same subject. Personally, I think Boot Fest has been a great event. It's been well done, but, you know, it's a few years into it, so it might be time to look at it.
Fair enough.
I have a couple of questions. First, I had a complaint today, and I need to know where we're at on, I think we got Airline between Laurent and Navarro, somewhere's coming up, and how far in the future? Or did we decide not to do that one anytime soon?
Airline on, for construction of that road?
Yes.
Between, can you say that again, between Laurent and Navarro? So that's where we've had the recent water line breaks?
Right, right.
Yes, ma'am. So our plan right now is to come back to the Sales Tax Development Corporation with a potential plan to move a project around in order to pay for that, for the resurfacing of that road. But first, we have to dig that area up and replace that water line. So that will be part of that funding mechanism also, is how do we pay for the replacement of the water line and then resurface the road on top of it. So I believe Ken Gill will be coming back to, or coming to the Sales Tax Board with a plan on that. If that's approved to move forward, we will hopefully go out for a contract and bring that contract to council as soon as possible.
And we do plan on taking that to the Sales Tax Development Corporation Board at their meeting at the end of this month. For context, you know, the water line along that stretch has already busted, you know, a handful of times just in the last six months, and so it's something that we want to prioritize. But it does, it won't necessitate us having to shift some projects around and things of that sort. But we'll present those details to the Sales Tax Development Corporation, and then ultimately, I guess it'd have to come back to council, too, right?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Okay. And on the same lines, when you get to the corner of Airline and Navarro, there used to be a sign up on the, I guess, the mast of the light switch that used to say "Right turn only."
Okay.
So you don't keep going on Airline.
Right.
Apparently, that sign's not there anymore, but I don't remember if there is signage on the ground that says "Right turn only" because some people are continuing to go forward, and it's causing some.
We can definitely look into that, and that may be, Ken may be able, that may be part of some of the hurricane repairs that we're bringing to you today. Is that a possibility? Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
But either way, we'll make that sign happen. We were not aware of that.
Okay, because I know it's not there. And then I want to pull two items. I want to pull D5 and D8.
That's the multiple-use agreement and the rehabilitation of the water well?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other items from council? Hearing none, we'll move into citizens communication. Any citizen here is welcome to come forward and speak to any matter they wish to. We ask you to keep your remarks to five minutes in length. Anyone here to speak to one of the items subject to a public hearing, we ask that you reserve those comments until that time.
Thanks for having me here, Mayor, and the rest of the council. I live at 2204 East North Street, Lot 28. My name is Michael Bondro. I have a problem with dog feces on someone's porch. No one's cleaning it up, and two Siberian Huskies live in trailer 18. It's blue and yellow, and the person that was cleaning up the dog feces, he got arrested by a trooper, so he's in jail, so he can't clean it, but no one's cleaning it, and there's flies all over the place, and the stench is just unbearable. And I always wonder, which agency do you report it to? Animal Control, Environmental, Public Health, Code Enforcement, or who's in charge of taking care of it, you know? And also, there's a revision on the Animal Control City Ordinance laws from August 2019. I was wondering if they could put that together, because some of the people in Animal Control wanted the revised laws from August 2019 into effect, so they can have more teeth to take care of some of the problems. You probably heard about the dog bite last Friday, and I think the animals weren't registered. They didn't have rabies shots, and I'm not sure, but I had to understand that you're not required to have rabies shots for dogs. But in Victoria, they have lots of loose dogs running around. Most of them aren't vaccinated or anything like that with rabies shots. And I also want to thank the Special Crimes Unit and the Victoria Police Department for all the work they've done. They made a key arrest in the trailer park in December, and they've made several others, including the landlord. He got arrested three times by them, and then a fourth time by a sheriff's deputy. And there's lots of criminal activity, and I appreciate the Special Crimes Unit and the Victoria Police Department on doing what it took to take care of it, including drug raids and stuff like that, and just appreciate the police chief, you know, for the way he trained the officers and the professionalism they do. Thanks, and appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Any other citizens' comments?
Good evening, council, mayor. My name's Russell Dempsey. I've recently relocated to Victoria. I've been here about a year, and I was actually wanting to come introduce myself to the council because I want to be considered for appointment to the Sales Tax Development Council. I moved from Bryan College Station and have quite a bit of a background, about 10 years working professionally in the field of economic development, and recently purchased and started a business here in Victoria, April 15 of this year. And I work in the field of staffing, which means that I do quite a bit of work with workforce development locally and regionally. As a millennial, it's real important that I get involved with my community any way I can, so I'm going to send my application and submit it. I would really appreciate y'all's taking that into consideration. Really just wanted to come introduce myself and go to my first council meeting tonight, so thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Any other items from citizens' communication? Seeing none, we'll move on into items with public hearings.
Item C1 is an ordinance amending the 2019-2020 budget of the city of Victoria to transfer $50,000 from the high funds fund balance to the CVB Boot Fest Fund, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for savings, and declaring an effective date.
Give a presentation, please.
Good evening, mayor and council. At the December 17 meeting, our CVB Director, Joel Navasat, had done a presentation on the 2019 Boot Fest event, as well as the financial status of the program. As you'll recall, the current Boot Fest program fund balance has a deficit balance of $2,486. This transfer of $50,000 from the Hotel Occupancy Tax Fund will provide a working capital for the Boot Fest program for 2020 in order to pay for expenditures leading up to the event, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Garza, did you say that we're going to do a little bit more in-depth in a few months?
Could we do the public hearing first?
I'm sorry.
We're going to open it now for a public hearing on the matter. So anyone wishing to step forward on this matter, please do so at this time. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing.
Just a clarification, are we going to, make sure I understand right, in the spring or so sometime, talk again about this and what changes are being made so that we don't have such surprises on our expenses, where we're 50% over budget on expenses?
Sure, yeah, we can certainly take a look at that. Derek Furrow, who's our second new Assistant City Manager, that's beginning next week, part of his responsibility is going to be over the CVB, and part of his sort of task is going to be to kind of help us fine-tune some of that. And so once we kind of figure out that structure that we alluded to when we gave that presentation about centralizing expenditures and things of that sort, we'd be happy to provide a follow-up update and share with you how we plan to do that in more detail, if that's what you like.
Yes, I would like that, even if it's not in front of everybody.
Sure, fair enough. Yeah, we'll make a note.
Okay, thank you.
Are we going to be able to have some input in that, too?
I'm sorry?
Are we going to be able to have some input?
What he's referring to is just the management aspect of it, which at that point, that's up to us as staff. But in terms of input, in terms of, you know, the discussion that Councilwoman Scott brought up about potential different uses for funds, absolutely, that'll be a conversation with you. But in terms of the specifics of how we run the program, you know, how we structure, you know, where we send purchase orders, who cuts the checks, who approves expenditures, that sort of thing?
No, 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 ma. We're talking about that. I'm just talking about some ideas that, you know, we could interject into the program and see if maybe there would be something that we could look at.
So we're talking about two different things, then?
Yes, yes. I'm not talking about the financing.
So you're referring to ideas overall?
Yes.
I know that at the last meeting, you suggested sort of diversifying some of the lineup for the entertainment.
Right.
Those are discussions that we're already having.
Okay.
And so that aspect of it, sure, we're already kind of working on, and we'll be happy to connect with you outside of the context of this meeting.
Okay.
To get your feedback on some of that entertainment. But in terms of the structure of the event, as I mentioned earlier, we're proceeding structurally with the event occurring the same as it has in the past for 2020, because we need to do some, make some decisions, whether it's lining up entertainment, whether it's lining up other vendors. And so structurally and structural conversations about the festival, those would be later as we determine whether we want to have a 2021 Boot Fest. I don't want us to cause any confusion about whether we're having a Boot Fest in 2020 or not. Our recommendation is that we do, and that we proceed with it as normal, simply finding better ways to manage and control the expenditures.
I want to understand any of the controls that you're going to put in place so we don't have a 50% cost overrun.
Sure, and I'd be happy to share those during our one-on-one or whatever.
Yeah.
I think your last concern was basically with overtime.
However it is, if you look at it, we're 150% over budget on expenses.
Sure.
We've never done that before.
Right, yeah.
I'd also like to make sure that the discussions that we have are held, I mean, not immediately, but sooner than later, because at this year's Boot Fest, I heard from several vendors that it was up in the air whether Boot Fest would continue or not, which really surprised me. I didn't really know what they were talking about, but, you know, rumors go.
Right.
And so I'd rather that we make the decision about 2021 sooner, preferably before Boot Fest this year, you know, so that we don't have that continuation, and we can have the assurance that Boot Fest will continue.
And I think part of our, the way that we're choosing to proceed with it, I think that'll happen, because in order for a Boot Fest 2021 to happen, there would have to be another allocation in the fiscal year 21 budget. So that decision on Boot Fest 2021 would have to happen in the summer, as we're having the budget conversation for the following fiscal year.
That's great.
Which would occur before Boot Fest 2020.
That's great, yeah.
Could I entertain a motion?
I move that we accept item C1.
I second.
Been moved and seconded to accept item C1. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Item C2 is an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2019-2020 budget to transfer available funds from the Texas Overpass Fund balance to provide funding for various projects, providing for savings, and declaring an effective date.
Well, good evening, mayor and council, again. At the last meeting, Mr. Garza had made a presentation on some recommended future projects that align with the strategic goals set out in the 2035 NPO Plan and recommended funding of those projects from the Texas Overpass Project Fund. So tonight, we're bringing forward a budget amendment in the amount of $6.7 million, $6.75 million to appropriate funding for these projects in fiscal 2020.
I'd like to now open a public hearing on this matter. Anyone from the public wishing to make a comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing.
I have a question on the first project. I thought that we had already decided to go forward with a realignment of that intersection and not a cul-de-sac.
Yes, so the item that you're voting on tonight is not related to the option. This is just the funding source. But if your question is, in which option council approved, council voted a resolution to support the option that redirects Stolt Street. At the next council meeting, we'll come back with an update, as was requested at the last meeting. We intentionally delayed that meeting so that we can be better prepared for that, and at that point, we can take a deeper dive into the specifics of that.
And it's probably just the wording of it on there.
True, true, yeah.
So could you just be a placeholder, HEB project?
Yeah, fair enough, good catch, yeah.
Okay.
I think all these.
Yeah, I mean, our intention was simply just to allocate the funds.
Okay.
Yeah. And we'll make sure that when it gets coded with a budget amendment, that it gets coded appropriately.
Second.
Moved and seconded to accept item C2. Any further discussion on this matter? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. We'll move into the consent agenda, pulling D5 and D8.
That's correct. Leaving six items on the consent agenda that'll be approved by a single vote tonight. They are, first, the adoption of minutes of the special council meeting on December 13, 2019. Second, the adoption of minutes of the regular meeting of December 17, 2019. Third is a variance to Section 14-10B of the city code for property located at 3402 Houston Highway to allow for the sale of alcohol at that location. Item four is an ordinance amending Chapters 5, 12, 21 of the city code to create designed districts within specific designated areas of the city to raise the standards and quality of development in these areas, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for codification and savings, and declaring an effective date. Item six is a waiver of demolition fees within the city of Victoria for qualified projects participating in the Hope Meadow subdivision affordable housing project. And item seven is a contract awarding to Third Coast Services LLC the Hurricane Harvey Traffic Signal Repair Project in the amount of $500,602.66.
I move to adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the consent agenda with the items pulled. Any, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Item D5 is a multiple-use agreement between the Victoria Transit and the Texas Department of Transportation for the installation of transit shelters and related improvements in the Texas rideaway.
If we accept item D5?
Second.
Seconded to accept item D5. Any discussion?
Okay, there are going to be six shelters added on there for, in addition to the ones that we already have? So what does that bring us to? Do you know how many shelters we're going to have by then?
I'm going to have to call up Lisa Cortinas with Victoria Transit to hopefully answer that question.
I'm going to have to call up Lisa Cortinas with Victoria Transit to hopefully answer that question.
Good evening, Council. We approximately have over 100 shelters in various areas of the city, but some of these improvements just have, they may have just a bench and a trash can, so they don't have a full shelter. So, what we're doing is, based on, we prioritize these projects and based on ridership, we looked at making additional improvements. So, some of the locations that we've selected, which is a little over 40 locations that we have funds for this year, that's not including three additional shelter locations that we're receiving community development block grant money for. But those locations will have either a cantilever shelter or a full shelter, kind of like what our existing design is.
Okay, well, how far south, and we're not giving up any shelters to install new ones?
No, these are all additions. So, we're just making additional improvements because we had the additional money based on this additional grant that we had received.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign.
Is a contract award for the rehabilitation of well number 15 and 16 to Weisinger Incorporated in the amount of $183,342.
Move to approve item D8.
Second.
The motion is second to approach item D8, any discussion of this matter?
Okay, I see that we have the wells that have been rehabbed are 19, 20, 21, and 26, that's four. And then, this year, we're going to add 15 and 16 because we already have 14 and 17. Where's the ninth well?
There are actually 10 wells, and I'm not sure if, I was going to bring Darrell up if you had specific questions about the project itself. But there are actually 10 total wells. So, you've got the four that we've already done, the two that we plan to do this year, and there's four more wells, and I apologize, I don't know those numbers off the top of my, those numbers and locations off the top of my head, but I can get them to you and email it to the full council tomorrow morning.
Okay, 15 and 16 are both, I think I saw one of them was off an airline.
Both of those are off airline.
Both off airline?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate it.
Sure, sure, and I'll send that to council first thing in the morning.
Thank you, thank you so much.
I got one more question. This is under budget, could we get another well in?
Well, that's a, that's a difficult question to answer because we don't know what we're going to really see until we, until we get down there and we actually TV those wells. We have to pull the equipment and then TV it, and we'll know really how bad it is. So, what we've done is, Darrell's done a great job of putting this together, and he's done it based on a worst-case scenario. So, if they come back and they don't need the bowl replaced, it's possible that we could get another one in, and if that's what council would like us to do, we could, we could possibly come back with a change order. But if, if the bowls need to be replaced or any of that stuff is in worse shape than we anticipated, it may, it may end up eaten up into some of that budget.
We need to hold it as a contingency until.
And also, we, we're limited by increasing the contract by no more than 25%, so.
Got to rebid it.
We'd have to go out for additional.
Thank you, Darrell, that's a good point.
Any further questions? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign.
Item E1 is a variance to the minimum lot width for property located at 606 South Cameron Street, being within the Martinez-Cameron subdivision.
Move to adopt E1.
Second.
The motion is second to adopt E1, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign.
Excuse me, Mayor and Council, item E2 is a VEC franchise agreement. This is the third reading of the VEC franchise agreement.
I move to adopt item E2.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adopt item E2.
Thank you. And, Mayor and Council, I do not have a presentation planned tonight. This is the third reading of this ordinance, the third and final reading of this ordinance in front of council. And I think most questions have been answered by this point, but I am available for any additional questions. There are two points that I would like to make. The first is that I noticed an error in the memo that I wrote to you. In the first paragraph, I said that it was published for the first time on December 5th and published for the second time, and I neglected to include the date of December 20th. This ordinance has been published in the paper as required, and it will be published for the third time within three time, within seven days of this reading. And the second thing I wanted to point out is there were some questions at a prior meeting about pole attachment fees, and I wanted to go ahead and answer those questions tonight. The question was, have we paid pole attachment fees in the past under our electric franchise agreements? The answer to that question is yes, we have. It's an annual fee. Some additional research, I've determined that that is a typical fee paid by most cities that have electrical franchise agreements. Within the city, we pay about $1,250 a year for 85 pole attachments. That's where we have specific wires attached to AEP's poles. Now, that is not necessarily related to this franchise agreement, but that was the question that was asked, and so I wanted to make sure it was answered here in the public meeting. If there are any other questions, I'll have to answer them.
No further questions? I'll call for the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign.
Thank you. Now, it's item E3, which is the administrative approval of CenterPoint Energy's rate reduction.
Move to accept item E3.
Second.
Motion in a second to accept item E3, any discussion?
Mayor and Council, I do have a brief presentation on this, and I will be brief. There is just a few things that I want to point out about this because, as we've been talking about, a lot of franchise agreements lately, and the question has frequently come up, do we have the authority to regulate our franchisees? This gas franchise agreement that we have with CenterPoint does allow us some ability to regulate, and that's what prompts this fee change to come back to you today. Just as background, there we go, CenterPoint Energy Intex and CenterPoint Energy Texas Gas each filed a statement of intent to decrease the rates that customers pay. They file that with the Railroad Commission of Texas, which is the statewide governing body for gas utilities. They are seeking to decrease the rate that they collect by $632,756, and that reflects the reduction in federal taxes that it pays due to the Tax Cut and Jobs Act of 2017. And so, they are passing that savings along to their customers. The gas utility industry is a highly regulated industry, including the rates that are paid by customers and the way those rates are established. And so, I want to point out that that Gas Regulatory Act is what governs all of that and that cities which retain original jurisdiction have the authority to regulate the rates charged by those franchisees to the customers who are getting their gas service within the community. And what that means is that any time that CenterPoint wants to increase its gas rates, they have to first come to the city and ask permission to increase the gas rate. If we choose to reject that or deny that rate increase, they can appeal that to the Railroad Commission, but they have to come to us first. And that's where we have the ability to control some of their business practices, and that's what makes it different than some of the franchise agreements that we've talked about recently. The city of Victoria has retained original jurisdiction, not all cities do. Some cities choose to forego original jurisdiction and turn it completely over to the Railroad Commission, and that is typically an option that is negotiated at the time that we enter into a franchise agreement. And we have chosen to retain that original jurisdiction. Here, because they are suggesting a decrease, we have the option of administratively approving this rate decrease. If we choose not to, the rate decrease will still go into effect. But because we've been talking about franchises so much lately, I thought it would be appropriate for me to bring this up as background for both you and our citizens to hear. The effect of this will be a reduction of 33 cents per bill for residential customers beginning in March. General service, small commercial customers will see a 66 cent per bill reduction, and large-volume general service customers will see a reduction of $4.11 per bill. With that, I'll take any questions you may ask.
How long does our franchise or do we have the jurisdiction that we have retained? Is it a time limit? Do we have a certain amount of time that we are going to be able to use that jurisdiction or not?
The franchise agreement that we currently have with CenterPoint is, I believe, a 10-year agreement. I'm pretty sure this was negotiated fairly recently, I think that was negotiated about three years ago. So, we have about seven years remaining on that contract, and I can confirm those dates, and I'll get you that information more clearly later, since I don't remember it off the top of my head.
And if we, if we extend that, would we also get the jurisdiction extension or not?
Yes. As long as state law remains the same as it is right now, we get to keep original jurisdiction until we choose to forfeit that and relinquish it to the state.
Okay, thank you.
Need to clarify, if you relinquish it, what the difference is, because I don't think you and I have talked about it, but.
Yes, sir. If we were to relinquish original jurisdiction, that means that when CenterPoint chooses to increase their rates to their customers, we would not have any say-so in that, they would not have to ask our approval first. They would go straight to the Public, excuse me, the Railroad Commission, not the Public Utility Commission. They would go straight to the Railroad Commission for approval of those rates. During the negotiations of franchise agreements, the franchisees often will offer you more revenue on the front end in order for you to give up that control and relinquish your original jurisdiction. And it was the decision of the city during the last negotiation to hold the line and keep our original jurisdiction.
Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor of item E3? Say so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. We're now moving to city managers' reports.
Donald will kick this one off, so he can finish with a bang.
All right, thank you, good evening again, Council. In a minute, I'm going to ask a representative with Aquametric Sales to come up and do a short demo of our, of our new customer web portal. But to, to give a little background and refresh everybody's memory, back in March 20th, 2018, yes, 2018, we entered into a contract with Aquametric Sales to, for $80,000, a little over $80,000, to do four things. First one was to install new, installed and configured new AMR software, integrate that new software with our current billing system software, provide the end-user training, and then finally, to develop, install, and roll out a customer web portal. So, those first three items, dealing with the software, are all completed by January of 2019. So, it took a little less than a year to get all that done. And then, immediately after that, we started working on our customer web portal. As we went through that, we did run into some problems, and, you know, I intentionally slowed that whole project down so that we could make sure that when it went out, it was done correctly. We wanted to make sure that, that nothing went out there that would, that would give false information if it went out to the public. So, we slowed that down, we did a lot of testing, went back and we did it, made sure it was done right the first time. So, that's how we ended up to where we are now. December 4th, Ashley's group put out some press releases on the, on the new configuration, on the new, I'm sorry, customer portal, and it's taken off slowly. To date, we have 61 customers on that, on that portal. I think Justin can talk a little bit about what they've seen over time with some of the other cities and what that ratio or percentage gets up to. But with that being said, I'm going to ask Justin Hamilton to come up and do a short demo. He's got some good test data that he can show you, and feel free to ask him any questions and grill him as hard as you want.
Yeah, no problem. Thanks for that, Donald. Mayor, members of council, thank you all for having me. So, I'm going to do a kind of a high-level demo of the customer portal software. The site I'm using right now is a demo site, it's not the actual city of Victoria's customer portal. I don't want to show customer data in a public setting like this for obvious reasons. So, this is all demo data, it's real customer data we scrubbed from another utility. We've scrubbed all the names and put generic names, and so, we're looking at live data, but no personal, no personally identifiable information. So, a couple of the main features that you'll see right off the bat is this is a actual website. A lot of people ask you, do you have an app for customers to go to to look at their data? It's easier on our end to do a website because you don't have to keep up with the latest versions of iOS and Android software. So, this demo will be its own actual website. Your citizens can save it with their bookmarks, save it with one of their favorites. They'll go in and you'll see a screen very similar to what you see on our screen here. If, the first time they log in, it'll have this screen that says, need to set up an account. So, residents will click on that. They will be asked for two pieces typically of identifiable information that only they will know. For example, in other cities, we've used their account number and the last amount they were billed, or something only that homeowner is going to know. Again, it's a security issue, so we don't have people logging into each other's accounts. So, they will log in on their own account, create their own account for the first time, enter their email address if they want to opt in. Apologize a little bit for the connection of using Wi-Fi, so it may drag a little bit. So, some of the first things you'll notice as users log in is they're hit with a couple of, you know, the billing cycle usage. So, here in that top left-hand corner, the green is your current usage. The blue is the previous month's usage, and the gray is the usage from this time last year. Because in my house, I may get a high bill in May, June, July, and think, man, this seems really high for this time of year. I log into the portal, and it's like, well, it actually is kind of typical what I use in May and June. So, it's just a little refresher of what your historical average is for each homeowner, current month, previous month, and this time last year. Some of the other things that stand out is the alert section. So, kind of where my cursor is here on alerts. If the homeowner is seeing any kind of abnormal usage, if the meter is signaling an alert, for example, continuous consumption, so if we see 24 hours of consecutive water usage without a break, typically, that can be a leak, it's not always, but sometimes it will, it can be. With this software, your residents can log in and set up their own alerts so they can get emails and text messages when the meter shows there's been continuous consumption for 24 hours. And I'll go in a second on how we would actually set up those if I was a homeowner. Notifications here, the city has the ability to push out to residents anything you want to. So, God forbid, if there was a part of town that had a boil water notice or even something like, you know, I heard mentioned a boot fest, if you wanted to advertise or saying, hey, this part of town, this street's going to be closed, anything like that, the city has the ability to push that out, and it'll show up in the notification section here for your residents. Moving down to the billing cycle threshold, we can plug in rates, and we can actually look at the history of what that meter and each customer's used for every month. They can then put that in and set their own targets on water consumption. So, your residents have the ability to go into the system and configure it and say, send me an alert if I use over X number of gallons, call it 10,000 gallons a month, send me an email or a text message so I know I need to back off on my water usage. Then, moving on to outdoor watering, if we get into a scenario where we do odd-even water days or any kind of drought restrictions, customers can be notified of what their current water scheduling looks like. One other feature on the main screen is if I have residents who are more comfortable in Spanish, this comes standard, we can click over to Espanol, and everything moves over into Spanish, that comes standard. So, it is bilingual. Makes easier for more residents to get the usage out of this. So, if I am a homeowner and I log in and I want to see what my current usage looks like, I will click on usage detail. And then, I can look at my water consumption from the past six hours, 24 hours, one week, 30 days, 12 months, where I can customize the field if I want to do that. So, this is all access that your citizens will have to look at their own water consumption moving back in time. We also overlay this information with rainfall and temperature data. Sometimes that's helpful to say, okay, why did my water usage spike on these certain days? Well, possibly it's because it hasn't rained in a while and the temperature spiked, or in reverse. You know, why did we use less water because it rained the previous day? So, it's nice historical data to go back and look and help refresh customers on when they may have used water. Some examples we've seen in the past from other utilities is a customer. Some examples we've seen in the past from other utilities is a customer gets an abnormal water bill, they're able to go into this 30-day history, look back, and I've had customers say, oh, we had a grandkid over and we had the water hose running in the back, and I didn't know about it until the next day, and that's why they see this spike in usage on that one day. So the idea from the utility standpoint is to take away some of the calls that come in to customer service from consumption-related calls, so maybe the customers could log into this data themselves and say, okay, here's what happened on this day, here's my water got used, you know, here's what was going on in my house at that time. If a customer has multiple meters, we can go in, you can see here on the top right, as I moved it, this demo customer is set up as a rental. So if I'm a property owner and I have multiple properties here in Victoria, I can manage them all with one account. I can call one, the rental house, it'll plot it on a GPS, will show all the info from today. If I am a property owner and I want to send this data to a management company, or, you know, say I'm out of town and I want my landscaper to get a notification if I have a break or a leak at the house, we can do all that, customize that also. You know, one of the nice features, and we've had this come up also with other cities in South Texas, is we have the ability to set vacation alerts. Try again to... So if I'm a resident and I'm leaving town on spring break or summer vacation, I can go in and set the portal to, send me an alert if I see water usage over a threshold that I set. So for example, we had a customer in South Texas that set up their own vacation alert to see if they used over, I think it was 10 or 20 gallons while they were out of town. They got the alert as they were driving down the highway, they called their next-door neighbor, the next-door neighbor came over, saw that there was water running, cut the water off for them and it saved them from flooding part of their house. So the idea is we have all this data coming in from the meters, we're now have the ability from a software perspective to put that into your user's hands and make it usable for them. So I'm looking at this as a tool for your residents to take more control over what's going on with their meter data. Is there any specific questions? I know I'm kind of flying through and...
Yes. Can a commercial client use one of these portals?
Yes, ma'am. There is a setting for commercial clients also.
Okay. What about if they have several accounts? How would you tie them all? Or would they...
So if we're here where I have meter, if I'm a commercial account, where my cursor is right here, I would have five, six, however many businesses I have with all those account numbers lined up. So you can use one login account to manage the multiple businesses you own or both different properties you have.
Where do you add a meter?
I was going to say...
You would go into the, where you create the original account, back at that homepage where I was at.
But it asks for one account number, right?
That was just for signing on and creating your account.
Yeah. When you go in and create your account, it'll ask, you know, your account number.
Or your account number.
If you have multiples, it'll give you that option to put that in.
Okay.
What if you acquire an additional property after you've created an account? How do you go back in and add it?
That's a good question. Off the top of my head, I think you can go in and do that. I may have to get back to you on the answer to that, and I haven't had that question come up before. So either you could create a new account with the new one if you wanted to manage two different accounts, if you wanted to make it easier, I'm sure we could, there's a way to...
Now, when you travel around, you could say, man, the City of Victoria, they stumped me.
We think you should go to user settings. This side of the diaphragm thinks that.
Yeah. Let's see what this side says.
That's what it sounds like. It should be in user settings where you can just add or delete a meter.
Right.
Yeah.
I believe in manage accounts. Add accounts.
There you go.
There you go.
See?
This is a very user-friendly program. Let's point that out.
You're welcome to come do the rest of the demo.
Well, I'll tell you, I went in there today because I wanted to be number 51. I did not get past the, you know, you have to go back and you have to call the city, and the city's supposed to send you a password or something, or a link. I never could get past that because I couldn't get the phone to answer. But I'll try it again.
Well, hopefully, everything is up and running. We should be able to, you know, make that active. And I know as of, I think Donald said, there are 61 right now that have signed up.
Yeah, well, I'm sure you're going to have a lot more tomorrow, so...
That's the idea. Again, you know, I think Donald made a reference earlier, what we've seen with adoption rate from other cities. Just for example, we have cities like Cedar Park, just on the west side of Austin, pretty high-tech area. They've done a mass advertising, they bought Facebook ads, they have put in mailers, they have done almost as much as they can think of to do to get customers to sign up for the portal. I believe their current adoption rate's about 15 percent of their users have signed up for the portal or actively using it. You know, so that's kind of what we're seeing in other places. Every city's completely different. We've had some that have been lower, some that are higher, but hopefully that gives you some kind of frame of reference.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Some cities have got more than one utility, because I'm looking at, here it says water, electricity, and gas. So this portal will work in something like that, too?
Yes. So yours specifically in Victoria is just water. If we were to have, where Donald's going next, in Burnham, they have water, gas, and electric. So their portal will be all three. If you have three different meters, you would just click on whichever meter you have, whether you want to look at your water, gas, or electric.
Okay. Good.
Has any city partnered with a separate entity for access of that data? Or does it have to be the same company like the city?
Access of the data in which way? I guess I'm...
Like, for instance, if somebody had an account with CenterPoint for gas, is there a way to partner with CenterPoint so that that same customer can access their gas account from CenterPoint on your portal?
That's a good question. I think that would get fairly complicated as to who owns the data and how it interfaces. The integration, the big thing here is the integration between the data, is taking the data from the source, the meter, and then filtering it through a head-end computer system that can then filter it into a meter data management system that can then filter it into a portal. So the more links in that chain that we add, the more complicated it gets. So I'm not going to say it can't be done, but I would willing to bet it would be fairly complicated and I would assume fairly expensive.
May have missed it if you went over it, but how are you alerted?
So the customer...
If you don't watch this every day, do you get some sort of text message?
Yes. So you, as the end-user, have to opt in to accepting either text messages or emails per the spam rules. So if you go in and set your, you know, this alert recipients, if I go in and enter my send email text when water meters report, you can edit who gets which alerts. So whether it's a text message, if I put my phone number in, or an email, you as the owner of this account have access and can decide that for yourself.
Looks really good. It's kind of what I envisioned or was hoping for when we first approved it, but I'm impressed. I'm excited to go home and try it out.
Well, that's good to hear. I hope we meet all your expectations on that.
On that example, go back to that page, please.
Which, I'm sorry, which were?
The one where you just went back and had the alerts. These additional people, are people going to also get alerts? They could be your neighbors or somebody that you know that could...
If you designate that as the homeowner.
Right, right.
Right. So in the example I gave before of our customer that uses South Texas, he could have, if he was going to go on vacation, he could go into the system and set the alert to go to his brother, a neighbor, somebody who wanted to see that alert. But the homeowner has to be the one to designate that.
So if it's just the homeowner, you're just going to see the first line? You're not going to see the additionals on there?
Correct.
Okay.
Or you could set it up for your renter to get one?
Oh, that's true.
Correct. Yeah. I mean, again, this is a demo site, so we've had people all over the country that have been logging in and setting up their own alerts, you know, as examples, so that's why that screen is so filled.
Makes sense.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
So one other quick item. I know Councilman Solis, that you mentioned that you didn't receive a call back. You left a message, though. The utility office does have a very, very high call volume. Literally, the phones just don't quit ringing over there, so please leave a voicemail. I'm talking to the general public. Leave a voicemail, and they will call you back. And if you are interested in setting this up, 485-3400 is the phone number over there. And then I had asked Miranda Trevino to be here just in case of some very technical questions about the UBO policies and how we handle it. She was instrumental in setting this up, and I just wanted to introduce her and thank her for all her hard work. Thank you.
Is that the phone number that we're calling? Are we calling her directly?
That's the office number, and she probably will answer it.
So when you sign up with your email, you have to wait on the city to send you a password?
We'll send you a password via...
It's not automatic?
I'm going to let Miranda visit.
So when you go online to set up your account, it'll send you, it'll ask for your email. So you'll enter your email, and then that's when it'll, you'll go into your email and you'll have to click the link, and then it'll take you to the site.
But it's not something that y'all have to say, oh, we got a request from this citizen, and it's automatic?
No. No, it's automatic. It goes to the customer first or...
So if it's working right, they shouldn't have to call the office?
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Yes.
What was the number again?
Forty-five.
The direct number to the billing office is 485-3400, and thank you for that clarification.
She said if it's working right, we shouldn't have to call at all.
That's right.
And you didn't roll it out until it was working right?
You may have to do it at night and then go to sleep, and then wake up and check your email.
I don't know. Miranda, have we had any issues that you know of?
No, not that I know of.
We haven't had any reports directly of any issues, so hopefully it's working the way it should, and I know she put a lot of hard work into it, so I think we're good.
Donald, one of the features that I like that y'all do is where you text that, you know, our bill is due two or three days before, and then I'll put in there, yes, and then I'll say, wait a minute, your bill might have changed. And I'm waiting, I said, man, it better not have changed. And then, you know, you pay it, so that's very convenient, and I really like that. I don't know if it's part of this...
It's not. That's a separate system.
But it works real good for me.
Well, great. I'm glad to hear that.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thanks, Justin. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't believe there's any executive sessions this evening.
No, sir.
So before I end the meeting, we're starting a new process tonight of electronic signatures, so I'm going to have to, at the end of each meeting, ask you and say to please apply my signature to the resolutions and ordinances that were passed at tonight's meeting. Thank you very much. And with that, with no further business, I will adjourn.